So it's six thirty-one, I think we should get started. Welcome to everyone and I'll call to order the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one Wenham Select Board Meeting. This is a virtual meeting being held on Zoom and being recorded. Our select board is here, myself, Gary Cheeseman, Diane Buco, as well as the Town Administrator, town, Ryan Farrar. So we will start, as we typically do, with public input. I will make a specific comment on this public input, that this particular public input is for issues that are not on the agenda. That being said, considering the nature of this meeting, I just want folks to know that when we get to the new business item of follow-up discussion on Longfellow Road, if there is some, are there, if there are some comments or there's some questions that we need to address at that time, I will open it up again for some limited public input, if there's going, or discussion. We'll follow up with another meeting if there's more than that. So for now, if there's anyone in the meeting who would like to make a comment or ask a question about something that is not on the agenda, if you'll put your name in the chat, we will recognize you. I'm just gonna. Ryan, do you see anyone in the chat?
I don't. I don't, let me see, let me get out of the stop share, hold on a second. See if we have anybody else.
I don't always see them when they show up.
I understand, no, yeah, the, in the chat, there's nothing coming up, Catherine.
Okay, all right. So we'll, we'll move on then, the next item on our agenda, as always, is public announcements and Ryan, if you take, take those for us, that'd be great.
Sure, so, so for we, we start off with our board and committee openings, remind everybody, we've got openings, one opening on our Council on Aging, one opening on the Hamilton Wenham Community Access and Media Group, two openings on the Iron Rail Commission, one opening on the Wenham Human Rights Committee, and two openings on the Wish Committee. So anyone who's interested in that, please send in an email of interest to admin@wenhamma.gov. Town Government Study Committee is having a forum later this week on October twenty-first. This is the forum for resident feedback on the Town Government Study Committee, basically the determination of making a recommendation to the board to move from three to five members. So to be able to do this, this is gonna be a, a, we're encouraging people to both go to the tiny URL here and, and fill out the survey, but also to attend the session, again, seven PM on October twenty-first, so we'll plug there for them. Special election news, the primary is scheduled for November second, and the election is scheduled for November thirtieth. So I just want to remind everybody that if you need, if you need anything as it relates to the election, such as absentee ballots and registering online, you can find that on the town's website under the Town Clerk's Department page for under elections and voting. So just a reminder that that is coming up right around the corner. So COVID nineteen vaccine appointments happening on a weekly basis on Wednesdays from three-thirty to six-thirty. So this is free and open to the public, so. And this is a little dated, but we also had a, a flu clinic back on October sixth, so. Update that slide, so my apologies on that. One last thing too, that did not make the announcement, bag leaf collection is scheduled for two days, November twentieth and December eleventh. So please keep that in mind and that date on your calendar to get your leaves. Again, this is, this is bag leaf collection, so please, you can get those at, at Obion Hardware or Home Depot and make sure to have those out, the collection days, again, November twentieth and December eleventh. That's it for the announcements.
Great, thank you. Let's slide right into the Town Administrator Report, Ryan.
Okay, Catherine, thank you. So to let the board know, we are in the process of conducting interviews for the Executive Assistant to the TA position, that those interviews currently taking place this week. So those are, those are coming along, we've got, it's kind of spread out during the course of the entire week, so we've got some that are extending through until Wednesday. The, the Assistant Town Administrator Position posting is ending at the end of this week, so seem to have a decent amount of interest in that, so we'll be putting those resumes together and putting the committee together after that. I believe we had discussed earlier that Select Board Member Buco would be joining us on that interview team. So Diane will be working with you on that to schedule that together and, and review the applicants. Finally, the DPW Director Position has also been posted and is up on the MMA website and putting, we're also putting that out in a few other local, local places as well, or that as well. Any, any questions on that? Dan?
What's the, the DPW position is open until when?
That is, oh, you, you had to ask me that. It is, I don't have the date on it right now, Diane, I can get that to you, I'll make a note to that.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, you got me on that one.
Okay, I can, I can hang up now.
A couple of other things to make the board aware of, we had a virtual meeting, the Town of Hamilton, and Wenham with the MSBA on Friday. MSBA is in the preliminary stages of considering allowing the Cutler School to enter the process for potentially looking for either a renovation or the potential replacement of the building. They are conducting a tour, follow-up tour nine-thirty AM tomorrow, which I plan to be attending in, in Hamilton. So this is something that, you know, is again, still in the earlier sta, early stages, but in, in prior years, the, the town said not, the district had not even made it to this, this far. This is maybe, I think, the fourth year for which we have put together an application and finally have advanced to the stage where we're even being considered. So this is an important, important step for the town, obviously, we're very far off, may not even be moving to the next step, but just want to make the board aware that this is something that is being discussed and considered. So FYI on that front. And finally, I just wanted to make the board aware that, that the DPW Director, Police Chief, Fire Chief, and myself met with neighbors on Arbor Street and Etl Ave this past Wednesday. So currently, there is a crosswalk there that connects Etl across Arbor and is a primary means of access for the, for the, with the community to get to the Bucre School. So there formerly was a crossing guard there, and, you know, one of the questions that the community had was, you know, what's our chances of getting a, a community crossing guard back? So followed up with the school that has not been cut from the budget, but rather, as with so many positions in, in the current marketplace, they just can't, can't find anybody to replace them. So one thing, if anyone is on, you know, on the call or watching at home, I encourage anyone who might be interested in this to please go to the school district website and consider applying for that position. We also plan to be working with the community over some potential long-term solutions to their, to the speeding issues that they've been complaining about and hope to make some progress on that front. And I would also note that the Police Department has been putting up their temporary speed sign there to remind drivers to maintain and stay within the speed limit there. But I think the one thing that all the parties who were there agree that that is a potential hotspot for the neighborhood. We want to be responsive to that, so you probably, I just want to make the board aware of that, that there may be other requests coming down the line in terms of other potential things and solutions that we would propose to help address that safety concern. So that's it for my update.
Great, I don't have very much for the Chair's Report. I did want to let the board and others know that I attended two meetings last week, one of which Ryan was available to attend. The first one was, both with the schools, actually, the first one was Jim Purdy, myself and the schools, their administration, as well as the Chair of the School Committee. And the purpose of both of these meetings, the second one included some Hamilton folk chairs, FinCom Chair and Select Board Chair and Town Manager. But the, the purpose of both of those meetings were, would be in, I would categorize as getting to know you. There's a new interim, not new to the district, but a new interim superintendent, some new players on the boards, and so I think it was just an opportunity to, as I said, get to know each other, understand a little bit, share some information. I think what I took away from that is relative to the budget, we're all in our preliminary stages, and make a commitment to continue having communication and throughout the process and, and be working as collaboratively as possible throughout the budget process. So I just wanted folks to know that those meetings occurred. There was nothing really to report, and certainly, as is to be expected, certainly no decisions can be, it should be, were made at those meetings, but they did happen, I think, Tuesday and Wednesday of last week, or Tuesday and Thursday of last, last week. So just one, that's, that's all I have for Chair's Report. Gary or Diane, do you have anything that you'd like to?
I do not.
Okay.
We're here, yeah.
Okay, so we'll move on, the next item would typically be our consent agenda, but we have no minutes to approve tonight?
No, maybe have it, but no, no minutes to approve, correct.
Okay, so we'll pass over that item for tonight. The next item, this is our first new business item, so the one that I was referring to earlier. So last week on Thursday, we, we, the board and some staff, Ryan, as well as some staff, met with the residents of Longfellow Road slash South Street that are involved in the betterment. We had, we, we were there, just to, for the rest of the public who wasn't there. The board was there mostly to listen to some concerns and questions that the, you know, that residents may have or had. We made a point, or I made a point of saying at the beginning that there had not been any deliberation on this particular project to date by the Select Board, and there still hasn't. But I'm hoping tonight that we can, you know, begin a discussion amongst ourselves, and certainly, we'll see how it goes. But as I said earlier at the top of this meeting, after we've had just a little bit of discussion, see where we're going with it, I'm, I'm happy to open it up to a few people for, for comments. A few people from the, from the public, we do have other items on this particular agenda, but we're interested in hearing from people. So just as an update, we had that meeting, there were a lot of questions and comments, and those were recorded and also put together by Ryan, with special thanks to Catherine Tinsley, who won above and beyond and helped to put together the questions that were asked that, that night. And, and I know that Ryan is working on those questions, or I guess answers to those questions and, and comments. So that's an update, I guess, of what has happened since then. But I thought perhaps it would be a good thing tonight, since we really have not had any, we, the board, have not had much, any discussion on this as a board, to at least begin this discussion tonight with our own just general thoughts on how the meeting went, on what the comments, you know, how the comments were, what, what we think in general about this, you know, what's happening, and we'll, we'll talk more about next steps, but I think it would be helpful to, for all of us to share where we think, you know, what our potential, where we're, where we're potentially should, should be going with this project. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we start with that, and maybe Diane, if you could just, just give us a few words to, on your impressions and thoughts about the meeting on Thursday and, and your thoughts about the project and.
So I thought the meeting was very helpful, it was, it was interesting to me to hear the feedback from the residents themselves. Looking at the project from someone who doesn't live there, but has been there, it's an improvement as far as the road goes. But listening to the residents themselves, I, I feel that there are some things that have not been improved for them, and and we're not really part of the, the whole scope, so I think we, we have some work to do to make it, to make it right for both parties in my, in my perspective.
Okay, thanks. Gary, would you like to give us a similar, not similar, but your thoughts, doesn't have to be similar, just your own thoughts.
So I think first, just want to say thank you to Ryan. I know there's a tremendous amount of background work going on in this project, as well as the town staff and those folks that had not directly been involved in the project before, but were asked questions last Thursday night. And thank you to the residents for all the information and your perspective on the, the project. From all the information on Thursday night, I listened very carefully, and I have gone to Town Hall and I've read all the documents, going back through the history that I can find. And my first perspective is that there seems to be, at times, a distinct difference between what the residents have and are expecting and what is actually in the design documents. The, the concerns expressed, I sort of categorized into the first group, which was specific to individual addresses, if you will, such as, you know, I need the berm extended just a few feet, I think that was at nineteen Longfellow Road, and I know I had to list down sixteen, fourteen, sixteen, had issues on, you know, particular drainage or slope or whatever. And I think all of those clearly fall within the scope of the residual items to be corrected by the contractor. The second category I saw was concerns about the project as a whole, and that's where I think I saw, you know, some differences on the expectations. You know, I heard that the road wasn't widened, yet I personally went up yesterday and measured the road against the specifications, and, you know, it said it's gonna be, it was twelve feet, it's supposed to be seventeen or more, and I measured at points around the curve there, twenty-one feet, and at the choke points is the same or better as well. So those, that was one concern, others were about the, you know, the, the re, the full reclamation of the road, and having gone back through the history too, that was pretty thoroughly addressed back at the December and, I think it was March meetings, as to why the town felt that the, the impact on the water system made the full reclamation impractical. The residents expressed some concern too about the overall management, but I think, you know, the, they have to recognize that it was their decision to put the town as the manager, and that the town has and did have limited resources, so went out to the private Western Sampson for all the engineering work and so forth. And we are both, you know, town and residents and everyone are, to a certain extent, are relying on them for the technical expertise. The third category I heard was surround the costs, and I think certainly the town has the documents, as we reach closure and the closeout checklist on the project, all those documents will be coming into Town Hall, it'll be available to the public, and will be reviewed by the, the staff. The, the cost particularly, you know, there are a couple of concerns about, well, I didn't sign up for this, or this is not what we expected, but you know, it's, in a certain degree, we again, the legalities here, because if you look at the MLU and the betterment agreement, you know, the, was clearly stated that the estimates were preliminary and only estimates. So, you know, the hard numbers of, what was it, three, twelve, or whatever, you know, were estimates, and we have to deal with the added cost as they flow to the residents here. Now though, I think the paramount concern, looking at the Select Board townwide, is we need to wrap the project up, because we need to make sure we make the payment on the debt, the money that the town borrowed on the behalf of the residents to make this project possible. And certainly, we do not want to make any action that would risk the credit rating of the town over this project. That's an interest to townwide, and I think that's paramount at this point. And what's that mean? It means that we need to bring the, the project to completion, so that we can legally assess the betterments and get the paperwork in, so that bills go out in February and we make the debt payments. So I know, you know, from listening Thursday and prior meetings, that, you know, the residents certainly have some concerns on those individual ones, I think they can be reached, but, you know, I think the key points are that the residents will not be billed for anything other than what they were delivered, and those things that were not delivered, such as the full reclamation, there is no assessment for. So I think we need to find a path here to rapidly bring this project to conclusion, and that we'll need to get the betterments in place, otherwise, the town as a whole has a, a risk here that we can't accept. Back to you, Catherine.
Okay, so I see, I, I hear you, appreciate the, everyone's, you know, the two of your comments. And I think my overall feeling here is that we have somewhat competing problems. We, we have the clear fiduciary issue of, you know, a debt payment that needs to be paid and, and in a timely manner. But as a selectman elected by the community, by the residents, I feel like we also have an obligation to the residents. And I guess I, I am, I, just as by way of background, I, as people know, have been around this project literally from the day this, the neighbors came in and said, hey, what about this, these holes that we have in our road, what can we do about them, which is, I don't know, two thousand seventeen. So I might have a little bit different perspective in terms of the expectations, but I, I think that we need to hear and listen to what the residents are saying, and I think that there are certainly some things that are misunderstanding, understandings that, and certainly questions that need to be answered, but but I also think that there have been a fair number of things that have not even met what my expectations were from day one to day now, to, to now. Not to say that things were, you know, not done well, but I think that from the beginning, their, very beginning, there was an expectation of a scope of work, which was, you know, repeated ad nauseam in many, many, many documents and a town meeting. And I can understand where the residents might say, wait, we signed off on this expecting this, and it didn't happen. And I think we all, perhaps a little bit more of an explanation to the extent that we, we have one. I, I feel like what I have heard from the residents is they don't feel like they've been heard. And so I under, so I'm, I continue to look for a solution to this that's going to obviously be financially feasible for the town, but also not leave a, a group of residents that are lacking in trust for us, or have unanswered questions or unanswered concerns. So I think, and that speaks, I think Diane, I, I agree with both of you. I think what we have to do is put our heads down and work together with this group of people. We have the questions, and I know Ryan has been working hard to understand the questions, we've gotten some, some new questions, which we need to answer. So I think we have to try to work hard to find answers to this, but I, to find answers to the, the questions. Some of them may be, well, here's where it says this, and this is what you say, I, I don't know, but I also feel, I just feel like there's somewhere in between where we are now and the end, some kind of compromise or situation in which we acknowledge and recognize the concerns of not one, but many residents that we heard from that night, and our need to, to pay, to pay this debt. So, or begin to pay it. So anyway, that's where I am right now, I think I'm in a, let's keep working phase, understanding the, the, you know, the issues of time, but also understanding that there seems to be an awful lot of concern that I believe these residents at least deserve some responses to. And maybe that's another meeting, you know, just, just with the residents.
So, if I may?
Yes, please, this is our time.
I agree, I agree, we, we need to hear and listen to the residents, and I believe we did that. I think that a lot was said. I think a lot of what they're dealing with is, is, you know, sometimes a project doesn't end up the exact way they want it to be. What I'm concerned about is the few issues that have come up that need to be wrapped up, the issues with water or erosion that, that shouldn't have happened. But the bottom line, the project has gone on and it, it's almost done. I'm hoping that we can kind of grab it together, but. So I don't know if another meeting, I, I mean, I don't know how much more time we really need, because we do need to secure our, our finances properly as a town, so we need to make something happen, but yet finish the project as best we can. We can't go backwards, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't perfectly done. That we could blame this person, that person, there was a lot of transition, everything was a little crazy, and then you had COVID. I mean, there's a lot of things that happened that made it a little bit more difficult than I think anyone anticipated in two thousand sixteen and seventeen. So if we could just make it as best as we can going forward, sort of wrap it up, so we're all good to go, and, and just move on, I think that would be really helpful.
Yes, Gary.
Yeah, likewise, I think, you know, we've heard everything out there on Thursday, we've got many emails as well, but I think the key point here is to recognize that, you know, the explanations are deserved and will be provided, but we are on a tight timeline to make the fiduciary milestones in place, and to recognize, you know, bottom line here is that the bill is due, that the residents agree to this program to pay the bills, and to accept the program as delivered. So yeah, so as we said, you know, there's a lot of those little fixes that we can do properly here, but, you know, the, the project as a whole delivered a much safer, better road with the, the ravine taken care of. And, you know, if you look at the schematics, it matches up with what was delivered on the, on the road. And, you know, other items such as the full reclamation was addressed back, you know, previous meetings, when the Water Department and so forth, and the town said that, you know, the resources are not available financially in the town to do that, and the project, that aspect of the project is impractical.
So I think. I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask you a question.
So I think, you know, the current situation now is the, the, the paperwork, if you will, needs to continue on. We need to make the fix for the individual homeowners that need those things done, and to make sure that we stay on a timeline that allows us to meet the financial requirements.
Um, I just wanted to ask you a question, Gary, you said twice, and I, I'm, I just wanted to clarify. You talked about two different meetings in which, I think you said the, the town explained to the, the residents why there was not going to be a full-depth reclamation? I don't remember the dates that you said.
In March with Jackie Bresnahan, and I believe Water Department was there too, as, you know, and the statements were made that, you know, the, the full depth reclamation was not practical. As, you know, and the statements were made that, you know, the, the full depth reclamation was not practical cost wise because it would cause a full replacement of the system as they saw it. And, you know, the next meeting was, once we had the reconstituted select board on what 20th of April or so, when it was again addressed.
So these are meetings, select board meetings or meetings with the residents?
No, it was a Zoom meeting with the, the the Jackie Bresnahan as chief administrative. You know, and we're walking through the project and I'm thinking that was what? March 20th or something of the, in the spring that occurred.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that was during my recess. So I, I was, and it, and it sounded from some of the comments that folks were unaware until it wasn't done. So I, the reclamation. So I just wanted to be clear on that. So I'm not talking about when I, Diane, to your point, when I'm talking about meetings, I'm not talking about that we need to, you know, have the same kind of meeting we had before. But, and I understand the timelines, but as a resident myself, I, I, I would like to the issues are a bit more complex, both on the town side and the resident side than we can really portray here. And I think that the residents have not really been fully, their questions have not been answered. They just asked them. So if those can be done in writing, you know, whatever, I I don't have a problem with that. I think folks in Town Hall are working as quickly as they can on them. But I for one, and you know, I I might be in the minority here, but not willing to default necessarily, but still willing to try to look at a way to not alienate an entire group of people who live in our community. And I'm, I I might be wrong. Maybe they're not feeling met or alienated, but the fact that there are so many of them on this call does, you know, make me wonder. So I'm, I I still think that I would like, Ryan, and this is a request, I, I keep hearing about the, you know, the, the need for the obvious need to pay the, pay on this debt. I would be, I would very much like to see a timeline of, you know, an actual date by which, I guess, working backwards, the payment is due and the steps that are required to get to that point. So that we know what kind of an actual timeline that we're, we're working on. And then I think it's, it's, it's actually incumbent on all of us in town to to just get as many of those questions answered. And, and we can't go backwards. I don't I don't think anyone at this point, whether they think there should have been a full depth reclamation or not, expects that we can go back and tear up that road and relay it. But I think that there might be some interim, some interim steps. So it would help me anyway to understand this, the brackets of this timeline that we're working under.
Catherine, if I could, that's in the memo, it's outlined under the, on page three of what those brackets were. So that was provided as part of the packet. So basically, you know, this has to be assessed on the Q1 of next year tax bill, so as we can again make our, make our debt payment. So basically, in terms of the final assessment, we're looking at, you know, somewhere between, you know, give or take a week, probably, you know, midpoint of next month that we have to be able to kind of come to terms with this to be able to assess the, the project. So you know, I'd point everybody to page three of the memo, which outlines that.
I, I, I did see that. And I guess, okay. All right. Is there anything else that, that the board would like to to say on this? What I heard was that we agreed that there were some questions that needed to be answered. We, we agreed, we all agreed that we have a financial issue that we have to address. And I think just we're disagreeing a little bit on how strongly we feel about the or whether or not we agree with the concerns of, of the residents. But, so those are my three takeaways from, from this discussion. And, you know, obviously it's absent some answers. I don't think we can, yeah, today, move forward with, with assessments, you know, with betterment assessments, actual numbers. I, I don't, I don't think that we, e- even logistically, but, you know, we'll have to be working towards a mid-November date and see where we go. Yes, Gary.
So just to be clear, but all the other aspects need to continue to go forward. We're, we're still working with Weston and Sampson to finish up the project completion list. And that we need to get the bitcon out to address these particular issues, right? That proceeds.
Right. And I, I, I think as long as we we have a clear understanding or agreement, I guess, with the, with the residents on what what those things are that need to be fixed and how they should be paid for. A lot of the discussion, not a lot, some of that discussion, which I actually don't have a complete answers for myself yet, was around the cost of the paving. You know, how much should, how much was the project quoted on? What, what was the full cost of the new, just the paving? The bitcom paving and the meaning of the punch list versus, you know, this is just stuff that should have been done as, as part of the original cost. So, yeah, I think we've got to figure that out. I don't know. I, I'm not a project manager, but we have paid quite a bit to Weston and Sampson or are paying quite a bit to Weston and Sampson. Their work is mostly with the ravine, not so much with the paving. The work with the paving was at least, I believe, originally quoted a long time ago by another contractor. And now has been done by the contract that, that we have contracted by the town. So again, I, I don't think we know yet everything that there is. Yeah, go ahead, Ryan.
Catherine, if I may, so, you know, what, to the extent that, you know, the remaining work, it was always the town's intent to come back out to the project and address both, you know, both the aspects of trying to deal with some of the, the water runoff, which I think we heard from some of the people, as well as some of the specific issues that were that were raised. So what we provided for in, in the attachment was the information we received to date from, from the residents in terms of what items that they have, that they still want to independently or for each of their properties to get addressed. That, that is by no means exhaustive for anyone else who's has other, other things that they want to get addressed. This is just a, the start of that list. Please feel free to reach out to me as we can add, add on to that. But it is, you know, always been that, at least the town's intent to, to be able to go back out and address the concerns that were, that were raised. You know, so it's, we, we've recorded what we have, but again, I'm encouraging the neighborhood to, to reach out and provide anything else specifically that you want to have addressed, so.
Diane.
So that's, that's all fine and dandy. I think all the residents can certainly shoot off whatever they feel they need to get done to, to finish it up on their property. I think the bigger problem really was who's going to pay for those quote unquote extra costs when I heard from the residents that they believe it is part of the project and shouldn't be added to their cost. Is that? Do you guys agree that that's what we heard at the meeting?
Yes.
So that's, that's kind of a sticking point.
Just as a point of clarification, though, it was always, again, it was never intended to be just a, a one, you know, one or two day project. It was, you know, the intention was then to get that feedback and, you know, which we've received from a lot of the residents. We do intend to go back. So it wasn't, you know, one, one shot, Diane. It was always intended to, you know.
Right, but wouldn't that still be part of the project? So that's part of the, the project. So there shouldn't be extra costs to, you know.
Yeah, it's all part of the, you know, part of what we, we plan, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I, I think where some of the, the difficulty became there is this project, at least relative to paving, was was done in the way that paving, paving would be done in any other part of the town. So we have a contract with this company that does the paving for us, multi-year, one year, I'm not sure. And they just, you know, take Bill's direction, of course. This is what needs to be paved next. In this situation, it, and so then, so there's not really a punch list because they're paid to do the job and they, you know, they might do a first pass and then get some concerns and fix them. Here, everything needs to have a cost associated with it because obviously, you know, it's going towards a betterment and whether it's paving or the ravine makes a big difference. But it doesn't appear, and maybe we'll find this, it doesn't appear that there was a particular estimate or bill or invoice or for what, from BitCom, for, for what that project was going to cost and what the scope of it was. So it becomes, well, okay, this is what we've paid so far, but there's still some more work done. Is that added cost or should that be, have been included in the cost, which nobody really, you know, we don't know what the expected total cost was. So I, are, are we saying that for the money that's been spent so far on the paving? Where we have an expectation that all of the residents, you know, needs will be covered by the cost, the, the money, with the money that's been spent to date? Is that what you're saying, Diane? On the paving?
Yes, sort of. Yeah, because it's all part of the project. And I don't know what happened with the paving change there, but I, and I don't think that Bill, necessarily our DPW director was kind of in charge of the paving. I don't, I don't think he was really involved in all that. So I don't know who, who sent the pavers out, but they didn't. I, I, so that's a separate subject, but if the project's the project and it was supposed to do X, Y, and Z, and it's supposed to cost about this much, that's the estimate. Everything went up due to the situation, years went by and COVID again cost everything. So there was an increase in cost, but it should have a, it should include everything, should, should not have caused someone else now to have flooding in their basement or issues with their house falling into the ravine.
Right.
Catherine, if I could, just, so just a point of clarification. So we, the, the work that's been done to date, that bill, that bill has been paid. That's fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-three cents. So we always, so the, the remaining paving work that, again, we, we know we have to work with the neighborhood, each one, you know, each, each one of the neighbors, you know, to, to address their concerns. And in fact, one of the things that came up in, in last meeting was the fact that heavy equipment was parked in someone's driveway and sort of tore, tore up that driveway. So that's all, so the, we, we, we have a separate set aside within, you know, the current budget with the thought of getting back out to fix those remaining issues. That's, that's our, that's always been our plan. The reason we stopped was because we had these initial concerns about the full depth reclamation. We, we held off from bringing BitCom back to the vendor to act to finish those things. And we still want to make sure we have as complete a list as we have from, you know, as we can from the neighborhood to address those questions. We've got a starting list and again, I encourage the neighborhood to reach out with what those remaining items that they may have specific to their own properties that we'll, you know, that we can do our best to address within the, you know, within the allotment that we have left.
Okay, so I, I'm, I'm sorry. And I'm, I do see that there are chats, questions in the chat and we will take a few of those as I, as I said. But here's where I'm stuck. So we have an actual cost from BitCon for, for the work that they've done or for work. And a bill that's been paid for fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Now, we don't really know if that's what the cost, anyone thought that was the I don't know if that's intended to be the total cost of the project. I go out, I hire a paver. He says I could do this project, whatever the scope is, for fourteen thousand, whatever, six hundred, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And so I have an expectation that that's the complete job. And if there are some, you know, items that aren't completed, a berm or water, then my, the expectation is that the work would be done within that fourteen thousand, six, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Is that what you're saying?
No, respectful, I think what, what it is, is it's a two-step project. We all, we know we would have to go back. We always knew we had to go back out to, to the neighborhood. And we're, and again, we're planning to do that, but that we, you know, we took the pause at the time because of the concerns regarding the pulled up reclamation. So we always, you know, believed that we were going to be going back out and addressing this as, you know, as phase one and phase two, but one project.
All right. I, I, I'm still not completely clear, but I, I won't belabor it here. Gary, yes?
Well, it sounds to me like, so essentially, there's thirty-four thousand included in the current total project, the paving. Fourteen thousand of which, you know, plus the hundreds, has been expended. And there is, remains available twenty thousand within the overall project numbers that can be expended to finish off the individual discrepancies and concerns that we heard Thursday night. Sound right, Ryan?
Yeah, that's correct, Gary.
I, I understand that. I, I think I get that part. What I'm missing, I think somewhere along the way is, where does it's where does it say that the budget was thirty-four thousand? Like, you know, is there a, a document? Just like from Weston and Sampson, we would get a quote. It may go over, it may go under, but, you know, because BitCom, we
Wasn't the initial estimate fifty-one thousand back in the?
That was a completely different estimate. I think it would be a very interesting exercise, but probably not useful to go back to, I've forgotten their name, but go back to that, to that group and, and, and say, well, hey, so if you were going to do this today, what would it be, what would it cost? I guess what I'm trying to say, and, and it's a small part of really the, the whole thing, I think Belle and Flynn did, did quote fifty-one thousand dollars, but it was a different scope. So that was a full depth reclamation and through whatever reason we've decided or found out that that's not happening. We didn't get a similar, I don't, I don't think we got a similar type of quote from BitCom. So it's not as if we can hold them to, okay, you quoted this much. Now you need to do everything that needs to be done to get to that point, which I think we can do to, to Diane's point with Weston and Sampson with the ravine. Hey, we've got a quote for this amount for this ravine work. And it certainly didn't include parts of people's, you know, property eroding. So, so that needs to be fixed. And I think the expectation would be that would be need to be fixed within the cost or within the quote that was given us because it was a, I think, we, we don't know, but I think a, a deficiency. We don't have that with the paving. So I guess we're going to just say for now that the budget for the paving is forty, you know, thirty, forty-four, forty-five thousand dollars. And that will include all of the work that is yet to be done. Right?
So, so where's that twenty thousand? Where?
That's included in the thirty-four, right?
Right. That's, that's right, Gary. Yeah. So we've already, we, we always do, we were going to be going back out and so the, you know, the, the estimated amount is somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand to address the remaining work that needs to be done. It was never, you know, it was always, again, the presumption always was that they were going to be back out on site. And so that's, and again.
Right. So I guess I, I'm just not getting it. So that twenty thousand is not extra that we're adding on to this betterment to, to
It's, it, right. It's part of our
It's already, it's part of it.
Yeah.
So it was just separated out to do all the finishing ups of the rest of the project?
As a separate, as a separate standalone projection in terms of what it would be to address everything else on the project, yes.
Right.
And, and, and it's confusing because it, unlike the actual expenditures or unlike the other items, which each had a budget or expectation going in. Um, this one didn't. It was, and I and Diana, I think it's totally appropriate. But I, um, so I'm not faulting anyone, but I think the way this was directed was through Bill. It was Bill's job as the DPW director and he works with BitCom. It would have been his job appropriately to tell them to actually send them out. Um, so
I don't think, I don't think Bill was involved in the project. He sat out for three years, he gave initial estimates, but the project, um, you know, was not within Bill's resume.
Well, so I I don't, I don't want to turn this meeting into a who's to blame, who isn't to blame. It's it's we'll we'll never get to anything there. Um, but my my point only is that the reason it it's a little murkier is because it was done inex- relatively inexpensively, which is a good thing, but part of the reason it was relatively inexpensive for what it was is because it's a contractor that the town uh has a contract with. So not every, so that those folks pave every road that needs to be paved during the time that they're contracted with us. And there's not a, you know, so there's not a an invoice and an estimate for a written anything or anything it for each one of those. And in the case of a betterment, it just makes it a little more complicated. We'll obviously going to end up charging folks the amount that we paid. Um, I think all the residents understand that.
So I I, okay, so this wasn't exactly the way the project was supposed to go. You're telling me, so you ne- so who was gonna do the total re-depth reclamation if it wasn't BitCon?
Well, I I don't actually know how that evolved. I think we had, um, as we did for everything, an initial estimate with a scope of work. And then as the project moved forward, um, you know, we adjusted that, but relative to the paving, uh, I I don't, BitCon was never you know, contemplated, I don't think, and this is not a bad thing, it's that that's the paver that Wenham uses. We have a a, I don't know, Ryan, one-year, two-year contract, which helps us um, with this contractor, so that we say to them or Bill says to them, I don't say to them, Bill says to them, hey, um, you know, X road is next to be paved and um they go out and they do it. So this is what happened here. It's just sort of a course of of action. Um, and so far, it's cost, I guess, fifteen thousand dollars or so, and um we're finding out that there's probably another, I don't know, what are we saying? Thirty, twenty thousand dollars worth of work to be done. So we're sort of finding it out as we go along. Um, and that's, I guess that's all I'm saying. It's it's different than everything else. And that the conversation, and it was, I think, our misnomer to call it a punch list, is I think the expectation whether in writing or not, was the paving that was done was going to cost about I don't know, thirty, forty thousand dollars. Um, and that included going back and as always with paving, fixing things. It's just that it 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 had no quote, it had no invoice, it had no bill, it just was, you know, done in the course of. So anyway.
If I could, to just as a point of clarification, basically, the 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 contract's set up on a a time and materials uh basis, so that when the vendor goes out they're keeping track of how much material they're using, how many man-hours, and then that that becomes the basis the for the bill, so.
So that was, so if I get, well, again, we'll talk about this offline because it's still not complete completely computing to me where the time and materials goes relative to okay, this is what should have been done and wasn't, so now there's more time and materials. But anyway, let's not go there, because I would like to to at least take a few minutes. Um, I don't know how many people are in the chat, but if it's okay with the board, I I, we got a lot of people here. Um, we, I would ask that we not, at this point, ask questions that we've already asked. Uh, please just have co- some confidence that we will answer them. But if there are priorities um or thing or or a process that you have questions on or comments on um, I will entertain um some, uh, to the extent that we have time tonight. Um, I think, again, I can't see everyone in the chat, um, but I think Mr. Parsi Ali um, was the first one. Is that what you see as well, Ryan? And if so?
I I think, well, yeah, Linda put her name in first, if it, uh, but
Okay.
I don't know if that would
Okay. So here are the names that I have, Parsi Ali, Maderos, Christina M. And and Rick Woodland. Those are the folks that I've heard, uh, that I see on my screen anyway, which is interesting. Um, that that would like to speak, so um, if just to be organized, if uh it's, if it's okay with Linda, I think we did this, this feels like a deja vu. Linda, if you'd like to go first, that's fine. I have Mr. Parsi Ali on the on my list first. I'll leave it to the two of you, who whoever would like to um speak first.
It's fine, and and I will try not to repeat myself. Um, so I I will, and I just wanna start where we're where we're at right now. Um, because I do feel like the the new members of of the board, I appreciate the time and the effort that you're putting in to understand um, the project. Um, but I I I think that there still is a lot of not really understanding the origins and how this was set up. I mean, there was nothing that we agreed to upfront that Peter did not provide us detailed breakdowns. Um, we discussed a lot, the costs, we got estimates, we didn't get just numbers from the town. We physically saw the Bell and Flynn estimate. It included the 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 full-depth reclamation. It included adjusting the water lines. Um, so the fifty-one thousand included all kinds, a scope of service that that isn't even in any way, shape, or form related to what BitCom is doing. And I think some of my neighbors last time indicated that they were uncomfortable continuing to add to a bill um, that maybe we're all gonna end up paying. And so, I mean, that does need to be sorted out. And I did say last time that the damage to Barbara's driveway was done by JJ Fallon. Um, so I'm still not even understanding how that is the responsibility of um anybody but JJ Fallon to fix. So moving on, however, what I really wanted to sort of start with, um is again, just this this really, you know, every time we meet, um, some new wrinkle comes in that just shows that there's just a whole lot of misunderstanding, because the meetings we had in December and March with uh Mr. Mansfield about the water main had nothing to do with full-depth reclamation of the road. I have the documents from those meetings. Um, one of those meetings was recorded. So that's pretty easy to go back and verify. The issue at the time was the retaining wall was being put into the ravine. And Weston and Sampson's um and and JJ Fallon were concerned that the support beams for the retaining wall, the design they had chosen, was supposed to be drilled under the road. And they were concerned that that was gonna rupture the water main. We at no point, and we made a decision about what to do about the design of the retaining wall. That's all we discussed. The full-depth reclamation never came up in December or March, ever. It was just completely not part of that. So we had to decide, and we did decide, to change the retaining wall from having beams drilled underneath to having additional riprap slope. That is all we did in December and March. So the idea that we all had a discussion a year ago, almost, about uh, full-depth reclamation being impractical is just flat wrong. So it gets very frustrating. This really gets very frustrating when we have to keep saying, you have no idea what you're talking about. So full-depth reclamation, as far as I could see, based on Bell and Flynn's estimate, was something they anticipated doing understanding that they were gonna need to do some adjusting of the water lines. And it was gonna cost them, according to them, fifty-one thousand, and I agree. If we asked them to do a quote today, it probably would not be fifty-one thousand today. But the idea that it would be over a hundred thousand, which is the quote we got to just pave the road after we replaced the water main for three hundred eighty-some grand. I, you know, you're talking about four hundred thousand versus a prior estimate of fifty-one. And so the frustration for me is that, you're right, who knows, we're probably not gonna dig up the road now. Um, and we do have to figure out which of these punch list items, I'm gonna continue to call it that, because that's where, that that's what you called it in the beginning. Um, which of them really do need to be done, um, and and added to the cost? Which of them really, we should be chasing the contractor, uh, certainly JJ Fallon in Barbara's case, and I think in Sheila Coffey's case as well, it was not the paving that did the damage, it was the contractor, but I could be wrong. But there's a lot still to sort out. And it's not our fault that um I sent the first email that stopped the work in July. I've read that a couple of times. Oh, we stopped everything because of Linda Maderos. Well, great, that was in July. And then um council for the town sent a memo in September. We didn't meet until last Thursday, and all of a sudden, you're like, oh, my God, we have this big crisis, we've gotta pay a bill. So it seems to me that we all should be thinking about creatively, what can we do to buy ourselves some time and to address this concern about needing to pay a bill on an interim basis? It's a twenty-year betterment. Um, there isn't a need to pay a twenty-year bill next month, um, or to make a commitment. I mean, you know, there's just no there's just no leadership right now coming from the town about how you're gonna in a practical way, deal with an entire neighborhood, really, that is very upset about the way it's been handled, and still even today, we're hearing misinformation about just how you just don't even understand what what we've been doing since twenty seventeen. So I I'm gonna let other people talk, but that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Linda. Mr. Parsi Ali? Are you there?
Yes, so my question's, it's it's pointed at Gary, but it's point, I I think I heard a little bit from Diane as well that I'm I'm really shocked to hear the three, the town officials, not you, Catherine, no offense to everybody else, but to say that this project's complete. How, I I I I need to hear directly that you you walked it, Gary, and said, it's all set.
In that we still need the punch list items to be done. But that
Right. So let me speak, Gary, please. You know what? Let's let's do just what you did. Let me finish what I'm saying, and then you can jump in. So, a project like this, to say it's essentially complete doesn't mean you can start billing everyone for it. It's not complete in any way, until I could see a report from someone, everyone's paying hundreds of thousands of dollars from. So we had, we paid Weston and Sampson over a hundred thousand dollars to manage this project, I'm hearing. I guess it's Weston and Sampson, which, again, I'm not gonna ask that question again. Because maybe we'll get an answer to that. But you, you guys are saying to us, hey, we gotta pay the betterment. Okay, we'd agree to that. I bet you everyone would here. If you guys would do your due diligence before asking for that, to come up with all the documentation that says the extras were for this, the road is hundred percent safe and passable and improved. I heard that the fire department was out here today, taking measurements as well. Did, I didn't hear any talk about that. So all I wanna say is, this is like you telling me, I have to buy a house, pay for the house now, Tim. But we don't have a certificate of occupancy, and um maybe some of the final sign-offs aren't even done. That's what you're really asking us to do. And i- it's it's what Linda just said, hurry up, we have to pay the bill. We didn't know this for the past four years, that this bill would be due now? It's it's shocking. So I I'm I'm done.
Gary.
No, I think, you know, the point I was trying to make was that it's important to move to completion here because the bill is coming due. And yes, the town knew that from the day that they borrowed the money, what, two years ago or in twenty eighteen? So that schedule was already in place all along. You know, and certainly we know that, you know, by law, the assess, the uh betterment cannot be assessed until the project is complete. That's why I was not saying that the project is complete. I said we need to complete the project because we do have the deadline to meet on the betterment. To make sure the uh, that payment is made.
Okay, um. Christina is is next. I'm just being conscious of the time.
Hi, thank you. I don't have, I really don't have a comment for the group. My comment was directly to you, Catherine. I appreciate your open-mindedness and uh realizing this, the scope of this project and how complicated it is, and and giving the residents uh the voice to speak. So that was my only comment.
Well, thank you. I I can't really, I I think uh my um my comments, my ish, my understanding, I think is merely um a um a function of the fact that I was, you know, literally here day one, and I've watched it um through, you know um, many staff members, many administrators, a few new neighbors, and I think that just gives me a little bit different perspective, so thank you for that.
We have Rick and then Chris Woods, Catherine.
Okay, Rick, please.
Rick Woodland, twenty-six Maple Street. Uh, I am not a neighbor, uh, but I kind of have an opinion here that I I think, uh, as I've watched this, now I've been a resident now of twenty-five years, I've seen a couple of large projects go um, south and alienate neighbors and friends, and it shouldn't have. And uh, I think the town leadership here has the opportunity uh to admit that there were management problems without having to point a finger at anybody. We know it's been a very turbulent four or five years. And just say, look, it, we have to make you whole. It's not just about getting our bond payment. There are ways to figure that out, I believe, but it's about doing good for the people who elected you. And I've seen so many times this town now in my twenty-five years, and I know, Gary, your family goes back generations. Um, that this 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 has to stop, that i- i- if somebody does do something incorrectly, or doesn't manage a project well enough, or doesn't particularly communicate well, which was a problem in the last issue that I'm aware of, that the town leadership needs to be responsible to make it right to the citizens and not force them into a corner. And if not, I I just see another lawsuit and more bills, and uh, I don't wanna be involved in that and have to pay those bills as a resident not living on that street. So whatever you can do, I hope you all will work it out, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak as a non-resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, did you say, oh, Chris, is that? Yeah.
Yeah, I I keep hearing about this this twenty thousand dollar allocation for punch list items, et cetera, et cetera, and I suppose my bigger concern is, we're talking about Weston and Sampson, and I'm now having issues with the actual design from day one. That I've always said, my concern was that this project, while making the road cipher, might make what is essentially the yard my kids play in go away. And here we are, less than a year from production, and I'm looking at a yard that's collapsing and sinkholes forming because they pulled things out of the ravine. And yeah, the road's much better, but I don't have a place for my kids to play theoretically three or four years from now. And I don't know how a twenty thousand dollar punch list item is gonna allow them to fix a design error as well as everyone else's problem. And yet, we're talking about, oh, we've already paid the engineers essentially who designed it, and now we're talking about paying the people who built it wrong. So, and maybe this is a thing that I need to reach out separately and address, I I don't know. Um, but my concern is that not only was it not completed the way we wanted, it wasn't designed the way I was told it was going to be. My concern from day one was my house staying where it is. And now, I, yeah, no, no, we got it. We thought about the erosion, we thought about the erosion. Well, you thought about the erosion from the road, not from the things next to the road. If I'm hired to build a bridge and I make a bridge over the water that stops the boats, technically, I did my job, but that's not the end goal. The end goal is to allow everything in the area to keep working. So that's where my concern sits, and maybe that's something that's addressable and is being taken care of, but that's I just feel like I need to bring that up because I don't want that to get pushed to the side and forgot about because, well, the road's good and the guardrail's good, and now no one's basement floods. It's a yard, I understand that. It's not, I don't live in the yard, but I really, you know, more than a foot of erosion within a year, when it didn't move at all for ten years, is pretty significant in my point of view, and I'm sorry to keep harping on that point, but I, it's not something I've seen brought up and addressed as a a, yeah, the en- the engineers screwed up from day one. It's, I don't think that's a town management thing. I don't think that's a construction thing. I think that's from day one it was wrong, and even if they followed the blueprints perfectly, it was wrong from day one. So what's my course of action there is where I'm concerned. Am I gonna be paying a bill every quarter to watch my yard go away?
So if I could, Chris, yeah, so, yeah, you see, really, you're making a good point, that it's, the roadway's one thing. And then your question, which you had mentioned in the community meeting as well. So we have a list of questions that came up with that. That was one of the, I would say, probably more press, even more pressing questions that came up. And we're absolutely gonna follow up with that.
Okay, that's, that's all I needed. I just wasn't sure.
Not, that's, it's understandable as to why that's, that's a significant concern, and it's separate from, you know, the paving project. So that's one of the things, these are really two separate projects.
Okay.
With the ravine work and the road work, so, so, you know.
So it occurs to me that it might be useful to accumulate all the questions, which we mostly have, I think, all in one place now. But to send the questions, you know, make them public or send them back to the residents, so everyone at least sees that their question is on there. And, you know, Ryan, we know that you're going to be working to address some of the clearer, bigger issues as quickly as possible. And I honestly think that's all that we can reasonably do tonight. Is just continue working and getting answers and understanding finance and the financing and seeing if we have any other options. You know, that would buy us a little time. I don't know the answer to that. It'd be great if there were, but I think it's probably worth a couple of questions.
I think Jess Baker had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, this is Jess Baker, 16.
Oh, hi.
Hi, 16 Longfellow Road. Mr. Cheeseman, you had mentioned, listening to one of the meetings in December. And I think, Linda, you have a recording of that. During that meeting, we were told that the road would be paved and then a sidewalk would be painted, which I questioned that, and the response from either the engineer or the builders was so condescending. So I'm just wondering, what, when are we gonna paint the road? And I don't see it even be impossible to have a sidewalk. The road is even narrower than before. So I, I appreciate the fact that Mr. Cheeseman sees some improvements up here, but from a standpoint with young children and a new driver, there is no room for a walkway. So I really don't feel that there has been an improvement. So my question is about this said sidewalk that was going to be painted. So I'm wondering what happened with that? Thank you.
Yes, well, we'll add that to the list. And I think that we acknowledged earlier. Oh, sure, Gary, yeah.
You know, the, my point there was, you know, it's not that what you expected is what you're getting. It's, my look at it was going back through the documents to see if what was delivered was in accordance with the specifications. You know, and yes, so, you know, clearly on the specifications, it shows the four-foot walkway that still needs to be painted and so forth, if you're gonna put one in. So, you know, it's, it's a fine point, but yeah, there's, you know, the, the design versus delivery and the expectations versus what we're seeing now. Two separate things. And as I said right at the beginning, there's, there's a difference there that we need to address.
Yeah, I, sorry.
Sorry.
So in December, though, the, the road was already done and the railing and a horrible fence was already put in. So I guess my question is about, you know, people being condescending and not working with the neighbors, saying there'll be a walkway, and it'll be painted and it's four feet. And I just don't see how that's possible if someone's been the project manager or even paying attention to what's up here. Where is a four-foot sidewalk gonna go? And then what did the fire department say today? Do we have that report?
So the, I, I just, this was something I had asked, because one of the questions that was asked is at the last meeting, so trying to parse all that out, was getting feedback from police and fire. So I, you know, I haven't heard back from both of them, but I, they both have been up there, as I think it's been reported. I'll follow up with them tomorrow and be part of the responses because I mean, that's one of the primary aspects of the project was that, I think, you know, Linda, you had pointed out in the beginning of this, was the questions about public safety. So what is public safety's, and the question that I believe it was asked was, what's public safety's perspective on the roadway now that, you know, the work has been done to the state that it's been done at this time? So that's one of the responses. We'll get back to you.
So I, that's what I was going to say. I think we heard that there was, in general, a request for sort of final approval, I guess, of, of the fire, of, of all of public safety. Also, what, a document from Weston and Sampson documenting this is what we said we were gonna do. This is what we did. We're done. You know, it's just closing, closing those loops.
As well as Linda's list, too, with the things that were provided. So, yeah, I noticed.
There's some, right. So a lot of it is just asking us to document those things that go into what we're going to end up charging folks as a betterment. It's sort of proving that, yep, this is what it costs and this is what we're going to be putting in the betterment. So that's at least my understanding of, of some of that, as well as, you know, sort of an approval or an agreement that the, the, if the fire, if public safety concerns were safety and whatever, with the road, where are they gonna put the snow? That indeed, they just give us a report. And I think the board would look for those kinds of reports before we, from the professionals, before we say, okay, yep, it's done, the project's done. And so to Ryan's point, thank you. I think that work is already being done. I hope Weston Sampson and J.J. Fallon and whoever else are also, things that are completed are being documented. So I say again, I think that's as far as we can go with this for tonight. I think we'll continue to get updates. I think the folks should see the questions, if you can, if you have a list, Ryan, and can send them. I think that would be useful. We will continue to work on this. As I said, from my point of view, I'm still looking for the, the magic answer that will buy us some time to do the work that I believe needs to be done. I don't mean the physical work, but just the communication, closing, dotting the Ts and crossing the Is, doing those things to pretty, to everyone's reasonable satisfaction or at least understanding, at the same time, being able to, you know, not default on the loan. Some kind of, I'm trying to understand how we can buy time, and, and I, I do that on behalf of the board and with Ryan's help and also on behalf of the community. So we'll report out as we have that information. Is the board, is the board okay with that? Sort of, is that enough for tonight on this? I'm not hearing anybody saying anything. Does that mean yes or no?
Good here, you know.
Okay.
I personally would rather have a better, better idea and better time and order so that we can get everything done for the residents and for the town, but I understand we can't really put things in the schedule as of yet.
Will we have anything by our Friday meeting?
You know, that's, that's a question for you, Ryan. I think what, what, what the question is, or what the ask is, and I, I think Diane, I think I've got this right, and I agree, that it would be great to have sort of all the questions and concerns documented and some timeline of when we think they could be addressed or will be addressed, and, you know, in, with some, some possible dates or even how they're gonna be addressed, so that we can see how we can get to, to an end.
Right. But you have to have the time schedule for the town, for that, the, the bill or the, the.
Right.
You mean the vendor, Diane? To get the, to get the vendor back out?
No, you mean for the, for the debt payment?
Yes.
Correct.
If that's, if that's a time schedule or a deadline and everything else has to be kind of moved in there, and it just, just needs to be moved along somehow. We all fell behind on this. I don't.
Right.
So I'd like to just move it along somehow.
And that does, that seems like it would fit. We have a workshop, a goal-setting workshop on Friday, and it does seem to fit with a goal. And certainly, it's the burden, well, the, I won't call it a burden, but the the responsibility for, for, for most of what we're asking, or maybe all of what we're asking, is on Ryan, in fairness.
We'll get the questions out, too, and, you know, I've already started with some of them because, yeah, and trying to get ahead of it. So we'll, you know, we certainly would be able to, you know, share with the neighborhood as, as much as we can, as much as we can get, because there's, there's a lot, a lot there.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's, I, I think it's probably fair to say that Ryan and whatever staff he's involving are, are working. That it's, it may have been an all-consuming job, but they, they're certainly working on it.
I'm committed to get the answers, so sure.
Yeah, and a timeline. So I think a timeline and how, how we think all of these things are going to fit within the time that we have, along with looking at, you know, what flexibility we have with all of those things. You know, we'll probably have some kind of, of an update, at least an update on Friday. Then we can go from there and see when we think we need, need to meet. But it does, it does make it very important, if anyone has any issues that they believe the town needs to address, it's, it's really important that you get them to the town in the next day or so. Just because I think folks know what they are, and if there anything that hasn't been captured, we just, you know, need to include it in the list. So we'll, we'll send you the list. We will get an update and we'll, we'll try to try to figure out a, a way to more completely perhaps communicate at least where we are and where we're going.
Karen, just a question for the group. I was responding, I know, Linda, you have a distribution list. Is that a distribution list okay to use for the entire neighborhood? Do you think that's thorough in terms of?
It's as thorough as it can be. There are two people in the neighborhood who don't have email, but everybody else is getting those emails. All the other residents are actually on there. There's a new, actually, there's 20R. I don't know, I don't know if there's an owner living there, so I can't speak to 20R. There's new people at 13, but my neighbors who moved from 13 have been forwarding the emails, so.
Okay.
I think that's as thorough.
A list, okay. All right. Thank you, Linda. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We are going to move our meeting on to the next agenda item. That doesn't mean that we're done forever without one, but for tonight, I think we've done as much as we can with Longfellow, and we will continue working on that. It's, the next agenda item is such a departure from these weighty, lofty, heavy things that we've been talking about. But if I'm correct, have I missed anything? The next agenda item is discussion of select board participation at the Saturday, October 30th, Pumpkin Fest at Patton Park in Hamilton. So a slightly lighter, less, less weighty topic. Which, Ryan, do you wanna speak to that, or is there someone else?
A fairly, fairly simple thing for the board. Similar to the, the shop local event recently. Sean Timmons had reached out to the board to let them know about this event, but also understanding the potential quorum issues and then the timing of it. I just wanted to put this up to the board. This is taking place on Saturday, October 30th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Patton Park. So I guess the question to the board is, do any of you, do any of you want to attend? If you do, do you want to split up the day? You know, so, and, you know, however, you might want to represent the town at that event.
I'll just jump in to say that this is an event that I typically go to. Not in any official capacity, but because of my, my grandchildren, and I think actually my children that are grown, I feel like this is a little bit, if I'm not mistaken, a little bit more informal than the, the the business one. Perhaps our participation or our presence, one of us each hour of it to, to be walking around and talking with people and, and, you know, just sort of participating in that way as opposed to sitting at a table with information and badges. It's just a suggestion. So I'm open, Gary or Diane, if you want to participate at all, and, and, and how you think we, I've, I've never been invited to this many social events, so.
All right, yeah. I think we can attend, and as you say, I think it's, it's gotta be just kind of unofficial. We're not in the brochure mood on Pumpkin Day.
Right, right.
I think, I think it says that they want, you know, tables, it's a trunk or treat. So I don't know how much walk-in, I mean, I guess we walk around if we're not giving out candy, but I think it's a trick-or-treating type thing.
So a table, I guess, a table for, for the, sponsored by the town, that has treats on it, that kids would pass by and possibly pick up.
Well, you could throw it at them if you want.
Well, is it a trick or treat? I, I actually like that idea. I'm not sure what kind of a budget we have for buying candy, but I'm, I'm certainly, I love to be with the kids and watch the kids, so I'd certainly be willing to participate in, you know, hopefully, sitting at, at a table and handing out candy. If that's what kids are gonna be doing, just walking through a line and, you know, through a group of, of tables and picking up candy.
That's what I understood, but I, I could be wrong. I'm sure that if we reach out to Sean, he could tell us specifically what he wants to do, but I'm happy to be there as well, even though it's not my favorite holiday.
No, it's not my favorite either, except it involves a lot of kids. So let's just make the assumption, I, it wasn't really clear to me, Ryan, maybe you can, you know, just formalize that. But assuming that this is, you know, an opportunity for the town of Wedham to be participating in handing out treats to the, to the kids that attend. Assuming that's what it is, who, who might be interested in spending some time there? I think having two of us sitting at a table looks a little bit quorum-ish, and it's three hours long. I'm happy to do as much of it as, you know, necessary, since I completely was unavailable for the last one. But is there either of the other two of you available or interested in an hour?
Yeah, so Catherine, you want the first half and the second half, right? It's one to two, two to three?
Oh, yeah, it's only two hours. I'm happy to do either or both of those.
Okay, I'm two to three then.
Okay.
Right.
All right, I'll stay home.
You get all the interviews.
I, I was thinking it was three hours, but it, it is only two hours, so. But you, I'll, I'm happy to do that. So yes, so there we go, Ryan. We just need to know what, what we're supposed.
And you are one to two, okay.
Right. And it's just a matter of understanding what we're supposed to be doing and, and, you know, making arrangements for that.
Okay.
Okay, moving along. The next item, I think we're gonna need to make sure we have all the information on, but the next agenda item is a request, and this is a routine request from Habitat for Humanity for the select board to vote to approve the regulatory agreement for 40 Hull Street. A project that, you know, was approved a while ago, but I know we're waiting for some information. Oh, great.
An update on it.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. I gotta figure out a way to be able to see everybody. Okay, now I see you. Sure, can you give us an update on this?
Yeah, sure. I did, the regulatory agreement was never sent to us by Habitat back when they first marketed these properties. So they reached to us and asked us to have regulatory agreement signed so that they can transfer ownership. They sent me the regulatory agreement. I sent it to town council for their review. They did review it and sent it back, and now DHCD has to review it. I got an email from a representative at DHCD that said their legal team is shorthanded and they will get to it as soon as they can. So for tonight, this is just gonna have to be put on hold. And as soon as I get that confirmation from DHCD that the agreement is all set, then I will put it, bring it back to your agenda.
Okay, great. Hopefully, we're not holding anything up on Hull Street.
No, it's not.
DHCD is not holding anything up on Hull Street.
No, the, the residents have moved in. The people that were chosen have moved the unit, so.
Great.
Waiting to transfer ownership.
So we, we will take no action on that tonight and put it on the next agenda after DHCD has given us their approval. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Margaret. We have on our agenda to vote to approve the November 2nd, 2021 special state primary election warrant. Ryan referred to that election in the announcements, and as always, we, the select board has to sign a warrant. I believe it's within seven days. It's in our book. I don't know if anyone, I don't know if Trudy's. I believe it's within seven days. It's in our book. I don't know if anyone, I don't know if Trudy's here or Ryan, if you have any particular comments on this, but.
Just the formality to, you know, to, to approve of the, of the warrant, so it's just, it's just a pro forma thing we have to do.
Okay. Um, yeah, Diane.
I'm just looking at the names. I feel like I'm, it's missing your initial, Catherine. And Gary, do you have two Rs in your name?
Oh.
No, yeah, so there's a, a single R and Gary.
Okay. You have a middle initial too, don't you?
And I do have a middle initial that I, oh, so, so Gary, Gary with one R in the name and an R as a middle initial. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. And Catherine A. Harrison.
This is from, I mean, I believe this is from the state too, so I'm not sure if this was done.
No, it's local.
Is it local? All right, so I'll, I'll, I'll ask Trudy to fix it then. I know, I know I didn't do this, so.
Okay.
But we could still, we could still approve it.
Yeah, so we, we can, the motion can be to approve it with the discussed amendments. Does that seem right? If, if so, I think we're, we're ready for a motion.
Is there a printed motion, or I'll just make the motion?
There is. The page before that, there you go.
Right. Move to approve the November 2nd, 2021 special primary election warrant with the noted amendments to names.
Second.
Hey, I'm going to guess there's not too much further discussion on this. Assuming that we'll move to a vote so that we can actually have this election. Diane?
Yes, please vote.
Please vote yes on this to vote. Gary?
Yes.
And Catherine, yes. Okay, if only. I'm hoping that we, we finally have this to everyone's satisfaction. And I'm glad Margaret is here again on this issue. Our next issue, we're now in old business, is a discussion and potential vote on the Maple Woods Community Preservation Act, CPA, and Affordable Housing Trust, AHT grant loan extension requests. Margaret, maybe you could just very briefly give us the background that people may not have heard in the public. We can move on to where we are.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Harbor Light, Maple Woods Through Harbor Light, sent a request to extend the timeframe for the conditions on the CPC loan document, which are also mirrored in the Affordable Housing Trust loan, I'm sorry, the CPC grant document, which are mirrored in the Affordable Housing Trust loan document. They asked, because one of the conditions is, actually, I'm just going to pull it up so I can reference the correct, the correct information.
Can you see the, the letter on the screen?
Yep, I actually, I have the, I can't see it that well, but I have on my other big screen. Thank you.
Okay.
So condition A, and it's a, I'm sorry.
Two A six?
Yeah, two A six, is the grantee of, is a building permit from the Wenham Inspector of Buildings within 303, 64 days of being issued a comprehensive permit by the Wenham Zoning Board of Appeals. That particular deadline has passed, of course. The, the comprehensive permit was issued in June of 2020. So the idea was that this condition would gar, sort of guarantee that the units would stay on the SHI or subsidized housing inventory. Because once a comprehensive permit is issued, typically, those units count on the subsidized housing inventory right away, and they'll stay on the subsidized housing inventory for one year, unless they pull a building permit within that year. Once the building permit is pulled, then the units will stay on the SHI. When, when Harbor, Harbor Light permitted Maple Woods, the comprehensive permit was issued in June, but it did not go on to our subsidized housing inventory until February, because we had to wait for the stipulation of dismissal from the appeal. And DHCD did not count it until February, February 1st, 2021. DHCD informed us that those units will stay on our SHI until February 1st, 2022. So in order for the Select Board to disperse these funds when the time comes, so when they come, you know, ask for these funds to be dispersed, the Select Board may or may not be able to do that if this condition was not met. So what we're, what they're asking you to do is extend the timeframe for the, for them to pull their building permit until February, well, we've recommended February 1st, 2022. So they have to pull the building permit by then so that they'll stay on the SHI. But then the, the reason that you need to take it to town meeting is because this particular condition does not have a caveat that says the selectmen can extend this at their own discretion. The next, the next condition does have that caveat. The next condition is that the certificate of occupancy has to be issued within three years after the comprehensive permits issued. So the Select Board has the authority to extend that one, which is the second part of the letter. So what we're, what we're, what we're doing, or what you're doing essentially, is voting to extend the, the first condition regarding the building permit to to February 1st, 2022. And then you will follow that up with an amendment at town meeting. Because this was voted on at town meeting, so essentially town meeting has to approve this particular extension.
Does that make sense? I think so.
It's a complicated, it, it's complicated because it's not a typical quick extension that the Select Board could just do easily. If that caveat was on that other condition, then yes, you could just extend it, and there'd be no reason to go to town meeting. But we want to make sure that, again, when the time comes for Harbor Light to request these funds, the Select Board can act in, in confidence that they can then grant, release those funds because the, they will have achieved that condition.
And then the motions that we have here reflect what's basically in the letter to follow up on Margaret's point.
Are there any questions for Margaret before we take these motions?
I do. So, Margaret, thank you. That, that made sense to me. But they don't necessarily need the extension. This is just in case they need it and they don't get the funding in December. So they don't definitely need this. This is just in case they need it.
In order for the Select Board to release the funds, the CPC funds and the Affordable Housing Trust fund, they will need this extension. They, they will need, this language will have to be changed on the agreements.
So a town meeting.
Yeah, town meeting really should change that language.
I get it. I'm sorry.
And I, I need to just point something out. I, I'm looking at the Affordable Housing Trust agreement, and the, the, the sections of the, the agreement that I quoted in the letter correspond to the Affordable Housing Trust agreement. As I'm looking at it, at the, and I, I think the CPC agreement conditions are numbered differently. Now, looking at the CPC loan agreement, and I'm sorry, I just noticed this as I'm looking through them. The CPC loan agreement condition would be condition three point, and it would be three F is the building permit condition. So I apologize. So I think we just amend that to, for completion of condition, it should be three F, applying for and receiving the Maple Woods building permit to February 2022.
If we could, three F for the CPC, but it's two A.
Yeah, it's two A.
For the, for the.
Yes.
Is that also going to be true for the?
For motion?
Is there a different condition for motion two?
Yes, motion two would be condition three G on the CPC loan and two A seven on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Got that, Gary?
Yeah.
All right, yeah, you're going to be caring this one, so.
Are we ready for the motions?
Are we ready for the motion?
Oh, yeah.
I am. Okay.
So motion one, move to extend the time for completion of condition three F of the CPC and two A dot six for the housing trust, applying for and receiving the Maple Woods building permit to February 1st, 2022, and that the Select Board commits to follow up this intent by submitting an article to the 2022 Annual Town Meeting warrant to revise the condition of the original town meeting vote to reflect this intention.
Second.
Nicely done. Nicely done. Okay.
Thank you.
Any further comments? We'll move to a vote on this one. Very, very happy to be voting on this one. Diane?
Yes.
Your vote on this? Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So a unanimous vote, just as the letter predicted it would be.
Motion two then.
Yep.
Move to extend the deadline of condition three G of CPC and two A seven of the housing trust, issuance of a certificate of occupancy of the CPC grant and the Affordable Housing Trust loan for the Maple Woods project to December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Okay, not hearing any further comments. We'll go to a vote. Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. So unanimous votes on both of those, and I think we've done what we need to do.
The letter too, right?
It will, yes, I'll update the letter. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret, for all your work on this. This was not as simple as it initially appeared, obviously. Okay, we're getting there. The next thing on our agenda is a review of an updated fiscal year 2023 budget and town meeting calendar. Ryan?
Catherine, I think the last time we talked about this, Diane had asked if I had checked with Trudy, make sure there's anything that she had. We made a few other tweaks to the calendar, which, again, it's a little hard to read here, but it is reaching its final format. I even see a few tweaks I have to make, but. So those, it was some small recommendations that Trudy had made, and we had included that, I think, right around the, the town meeting timeframe. So I think it was, I think it was this one, which was last day for Select Board vote and submit to the town clerk ballot questions per MGL Chapter 5418A. So we've made those adjustments. We've seen this before, so we just wanted to have the board have one more look at it before we make this the official calendar for town meeting and our 23 budget process.
Questions on that from Gary or Diane?
Nope, looks good.
I didn't, I'm just looking now. I didn't get to look at it earlier. I'm sorry. There was something about when we close the warrant.
Oh, yeah, that was updated. I'm sorry, Diane, that was updated too. So we changed the language on that. Let's see if I can make this a little bigger.
Warrant printer, March 7.
Yeah, it was, if you remember, we, you, you had made the point, and I think Catherine made it, that the way you do it in, in town is to make sure that, you know, we, when we close the warrant, the warrant is essentially, you know, you're leaving it open for other, he's like, I'm trying to look for the date, but.
So I think February 8th, it says we close the warrant and we vote on the article recommendations.
Right. And then formally, and then I think it was the 22nd, I think is what we moved it, we moved it back to, to, to do that. I think that.
Okay, so yeah, so it's still in there. It's February 8th, so you probably want to take it out of there. Right?
I'm, I'm looking at the screen. It's discussion of recommendations for town meeting.
The one above it.
On February 8th?
Oh, okay. Okay, so votes to close the war, all right, fair enough. I'll make that adjustment. Okay.
I guess so we pushed it down a little bit. That makes sense.
All right, so February 8th.
That works for you too, I think, Catherine.
Yeah, and I think, I think though we probably would, would begin to vote on article recommendations on February 8th, so. Or around that time. So that part of it, I think, is probably okay.
I'll remove the closing warrant on the 8th. I think, I think I meant to remove that, but then.
Lot of stuff.
I will make that adjustment, so.
Great. I, I just have one other question, and it's a general question. I don't, I don't think there's been a FinCom meeting, but have you had any input from the FinCom on this? And does it seem reasonable to them? It's mostly there.
Yeah, so this has been shared with Jim. I think he shared it with his members. I haven't heard any, you know, I've asked him to provide feedback. I haven't received anything. This does not include their specific meetings too, they're developing their own schedule. But this is in terms of the larger scale items that we, we have to address, does address that, so. Has been provided, although I've not heard anything back from him, so.
Okay, great. So I don't think that this, this is a calendar, and it's a blueprint of when we're going to do things. Some of those dates are statutory. But I don't believe that it requires any action on our part, other than our looking at it and saying, it seems right.
Holy moly.
Yeah, holy moly. It's a much more detailed calendar than we're accustomed to seeing, which I think reflects the fact that there are, there are people who have done a lot of these things, who have laughed Jackie in particular, who tried to incorporate all the things in the calendar, so they'd be captured, that, that she might have known to do without the calendar. So it's a little more detailed.
That was a team effort, yeah, on that. So, okay.
Yeah, sounds like a lot of input put into it. So we're okay with that calendar? Okay.
With the adjustment about the.
With the adjustments, yeah.
Right, okay.
So our last discussion item is we've agreed on a date for the workshop, October, for the continuation of our goal-setting workshop, and that's October 22nd, 2021, I believe is this Friday morning. Eight thirty, is that right? You know, I just can't ever get these dates.
Next Friday.
Okay.
This upcoming Friday at eight thirty.
At eight thirty, but this.
Eight thirty, yep.
Right.
Sorry. So.
Catherine, if I could, this is just a list of what, you know, and we, the board had asked me to look back at the, at the first meeting, what items were left over and things that we may want to, you know, want to address at this meeting. We discussed earlier, you know, this potential for, you know, MSBA funding for the Cutler School, that may be something, you know, that the board may want to entertain putting on, because, you know, when I was, Gary and I were talking about this in our weekly meeting and talking about, okay, you know, how does, how does this process work? Because it's been a long time since, but I think that this would be the first time we've had any large-scale, well, not the first time, but at least in law, recently, that, some large-scale MSBA-funded projects to, to look at. So this may be something to put on, as well as we did discuss an update on Longfellow as well. So those would be maybe two suggestions that the board may want to consider adding this to your, you know, to the item, the, the list that's provided here on the screen.
Okay with Gary? Diane?
Sounds good.
I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know why we have to do the, the school thing at this point, if we're not even sure it's happening, if we have other things we want to talk about and.
That's a fair point, Diane.
I'd like to put Longfellow in there, but.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I, I think it was just, you know, just getting that, you know, that it's, it's an interesting thing, because they're asking, you know, they're asking me to participate, and, you know, like tomorrow I'm going to go on the tour, and that's fine, you know, so, but as you said, we may not even get to that next round of funding, but, you know, maybe at that point it'd be a better time to take it up, so that's fine. So I think that makes sense.
Unless, unless the other two would like to discuss it. I'm just, I'd, I'd love to do, have an agenda set and then be able to get through it all.
Oh, wow, man. So, such high expectations, Diane. I guess I'd only have one, one thing about the MSBA that might be worth just briefly touching on. A representative from Wenham, being Ryan, has been invited to these meetings because the MSBA makes their decision. An important criteria in their decision-making is that there is support from the communities to move forward. Now, in this case, it's not exactly, you know, monetary or a particular project, but I think that it would be useful to Ryan, as he continues going to these meetings, to be able to say something along, if we agree with this, something along the lines of, the Wenham Board of Selectmen certainly supports, you know, appropriate school buildings, you know, some general statement that, that. That's really why they're inviting him, and that's why he's going, and of course, he's going to bring information back to us, but in order to. so we, we just need to make sure that we give him our support for support, so he can go to these preliminary meetings, but that's not a long discussion, I don't think.
Okay.
Um, I, I just have a question. I, I know we talked about these things, but there are two that I'm not sure I remember or I understand. The shared services part I get. Proper coverage as soon as possible. I'm not sure what we meant by that. It's item number three, the idea of shared services as well as proper, as a proper coverage ASAP. Ryan, Karen?
This one might have been your, it said like this was a, an amalgamation of different feedback from, from board members, Gary. This may have been yours?
Hmm, maybe, but I think it, you know, the, the shared services, I think it came back from, what, the COA board consideration of, of the shared services? And I think they each came in because they've already had or are already looking at the COA boards making some sort of agreement, is that correct?
Right, right, that's, that's what we're, you know, we're, we're working with, you know, I think, I think the board, I shared the board with the memo that was provided to them, to, to the COA and the thinking along those lines, so.
So, is this two different things? I, several topics regarding shared services and separately, proper coverage?
I think, I, I personally think this is part of the conversation about the Assessor's Office staffing, the concept of maybe going shared service, that, as well as Council on Aging and Mike, and then my concern. And then my concern about the proper coverage ASAP in the Assessor's Office.
Yeah, assessors.
Okay.
So, it was assessors, Council on Aging, shared services, as well as proper covered, current proper coverage.
Okay.
So, it's kind of a two or three mixed together.
Right.
Okay. Um, I'm also not remembering what number four, what the setting a schedule of time-limited appointments to allow for the TA to get work done. I, that, allowing the TA to get work done is a good idea, and I don't mean to discuss this. I just want to make sure that we have an agenda that makes sense. So, I'm not sure what that refers to. Set schedule of time-limited appointments. Does anyone remember?
Again, I do. I do. Trying to make sure that the three of us organize our time and, and not monopolize Ryan's time so that we can spread out our appointments or limit how much time would we take out of his day to get stuff done. But I don't know if we really need to discuss that, because it's basically the rules, the roles and responsibilities of the TA and the Select Board working together. So, maybe that can just be combined in there.
I mean, strike four with the idea we could talk about that. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Anything else on this? If not?
I would, perhaps not on Friday, but maybe the next meeting, I think, Select Board might take a look at the effects of the redistricting plan.
Oh, yeah, that's an important agenda item. We're, yeah.
The problem is, I don't think anyone really knows yet, because nothing's really said. That's.
But I think. And I, yeah, I'm sorry, David.
No, I'm done.
I was gonna say, and I think, unfortunately, I think the public input for that ended yesterday, but that's not to say they wouldn't continue to, you know, take input, so. I don't, it's more of an update than a goal, but it is timely. What do we think? Do we want to just?
Yeah, we can put, maybe put Trudy on the, like, not, not the Friday meeting, but maybe, no, on a, on a meeting after that, I can ask to see if you can attend and give an update to the board on that.
Yeah, because.
It might be, because we could do a, a letter from the Select Board to our legislators, you know, if we have a joint decision, so maybe if we discuss it on Friday, we could put something together and send it out. I mean, I don't know, they might have already made up their minds.
I don't think they've voted yet, but I'm, it's pretty, especially this district seems to be pretty controversial, so I don't, I don't know what, what they're going to do. Ryan, maybe we can at least get an understanding of, of their timeline and if there's any, you know, if there's anything that we need to do before our next meeting, and if not, then, you know, we don't need to put it on the agenda or on the, at the workshop.
All right, all right, I'll, I'll follow up the tree.
Okay. Okay, um, anything else on this? These are all the things that we talked about. Yeah, we might want to just take a look at them before we have our meeting, in case there's something that hits us this time that didn't hit us last time. And so, these dates that are, so, is this, this is our, this meeting's all business, other matters, but those are, there are some other meeting dates. So, we know that we have this, the workshop that we just talked about, the 21st, the 22nd of October. We know on the 21st, which is Thursday, the Town Government Study Committee is having a public forum. I believe I have on my records that we have rescheduled, but I have all agreed to the next regular Select Board meetings, one, which are both on Wednesday nights, due to the fact that we have two elections in November, but it's November 3rd and December 1st are the dates that, that I have. Ninety percent chance that I've got that right.
Yes.
Okay. There is, because there's a lot of stuff going on, I would just throw out there, and we could talk a little bit more about it on Friday, that there, there is one more date in November, November 16th, that could potentially, it's a Tuesday night, I think, that could potentially be a meeting, should we need it for any decision-making that might come up that is time-sensitive. So.
I think we have the 16th on, Catherine, as a, it's on, in the calendar as, as a date.
So, we have the 3rd, the 16th, the 3rd and the 16th in November, and the 1st of December?
That's correct.
Okay, I was thinking, yeah. The last memo we got from you didn't include that date, but I didn't look back to see. So, I, I think that makes sense, because the normal, the regular meetings would have been the 2nd and the 16th. For some reason, we had it as the 2nd and the 30th. So, let's just, let's just assume for now that we're gonna have those, those dates, the 3rd to 16th.
Looks like that's the tax classification hearing too.
It's, it's not, it's actually, it's just to remind you to get the notice out, the actual.
Oh, okay.
Will be the first, so we have to be, it's, it's basically as part of it. We don't have to necessarily advertise it in a newspaper, but as part of the meeting, it's kind of giving warning as part of that meeting that the classification's coming up on December 1st.
Okay, I'm sorry, I read that wrong.
No, no.
Appreciate that, actually, Ryan, because we're doing those, you know, sort of on off days, and a, a sort of a notice in advance just allows the public a little bit more, you know, one more, tune in on a Wednesday, not on a Tuesday, kind of thing. For our vast viewing audience. Okay, I don't have any other matters to discuss tonight, except to thank everyone, again, for our discussions and decisions. Is there anyone else that has any?
I'm so sorry, I'm so chatty today. Have, have we, have we looking into in-person meetings? What is our, we're still masked in town halls, I assume?
Yeah.
Because I, yeah, but any word on how we're gonna go, come together, or are we not?
Yeah, I mean, I haven't heard anything, Diane, recently from our Board of Health, of them giving us advice to the contrary of what we're, been currently doing, so. Hopefully, will be some changes, but right now, it's SOP.
Okay, all right. Anything else? If not, I will take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Diane?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Again, it is, what time is it? We will adjourn at 8:31, a little bit later than our agenda says, but we, we got a lot done. So, thanks very much. We'll see everyone on.
Next time.
Yeah, Friday at eight.
Friday.